I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everyone for being here for the regular session of Goldendale City Council for October 16th, 2023. We have two, two city council members who have requested to be excused, Filberto Ontiveros and Andy Hall. Do we have a motion that that affect?
So move.
We have, it's been moved and seconded to excuse Filberto Ontiveros and Andy Hall for attendance at this particular session of Goldendale City Council. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We don't have a closed public comment. What we do, we have a closed public comment. If there's anyone here for the agenda items, but we'll also have the regular public comments at the end of the meeting under item L. If anyone is raising their hand for a public comment now concerning only the items on the agenda, please indicate. Seeing none? Seeing none, but we'll go on to the agenda. And I have an amendment to introduce for the agenda. This has to do with adding under H, council business, a second item, airport committee auction, action item. It's an airport discussion raised by Lauren Mayger during a discussion at a conference this morning. It dealt with the Ginnett County Athletics Services Building. And we have a motion to admit that amendment as a airport committee action item.
So move.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda for the Goldendale City Council meeting of October 16th, 2023, to add H to airport committee action item. And this has to do with discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we approve the amendment. Now we will ask for a motion for the approval of the agenda as amended and the consent agenda. If we have an issue.
I move to approve the agenda as amended and the consent agenda.
Second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded and approved. The agenda as amended and the consent agenda. If there's any further questions or comments, otherwise we'll call for a vote. All agree? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And next item on the agenda is a presentation. We have a presentation that will be made by, it has to do with the Flock Safety System. It'll be given by Mike Gibbons on June and Carmen Knox here in the council chamber from Goldendale, Ginnett County. Carmen, if you want to, and this is Mr. Gibbons, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So you're both ready now?
So, I'm Carmen Knox. I'm the undersheriff for Clifton County Sheriff's Office. I know most of you. So we started looking into Flock a couple of months ago, oh, probably almost a year ago, I guess, Mike, for the sheriff's office. We know that we face a lot of crime around Clifton County and we don't have enough deputies to cover the square miles that we have to patrol on a daily basis. So using technology is one way we can do that. And so I learned about the Flock cameras and what they could, how we could benefit from them. And so we're working on putting a pilot program together for the county. And right now, I believe, I think we decided on five cameras per pilot.
You have the telephone right under sheriff.
Yeah. So five cameras placed at strategic locations across the county for that pilot project. So the great thing I know about Flock, first off, they have some amazing stats across the state of Washington. Things that their cameras have helped accomplish in criminal activity and solving some really important crime. Finding lost kids or, you know, kids from Amber Alerts, et cetera. So they have two kinds of cameras, and I know they're going to go over that. But what we're looking at for our pilot is one portable camera that we could move around. That way we could target locations. And then four sedentary cameras. So the goal eventually would be to have 30 cameras across the county. And those are strategic points across that they actually have people who, an analysis who looks at your area and goes through and pinpoints those locations. For us, it's every place that comes into Clifton County. So 97, both ends of 14, 142, Highway 97 down below by the bridge, Highway 197, and like across the Higover Bridge and then coming into the county. And also at 142. They can also be used in school zones. One good location, I know that we picked out for White Salmon, the school. And White Salmon is actually under county jurisdiction. So we'd want to put a camera out there because if we have a school shooter, all we'd have to have is description of a vehicle that that person come in and we can hit a camera with that. We've had two different kidnappings in our county in the last four weeks. One of them was at gunpoint in Trout Lake. And it would be really helpful to pinpoint the story, you know, that goes behind that kidnapping. And we could have that evidence in a Flock camera system, have we had those in place. The other one started out in Clifton and ended up in the Dals. Luckily, both victims were not physically injured, but of course lots of emotional injury from that. So that's one reason we're looking at the Flock camera and there's so little maintenance for us to do. We have to go onto our computer and just make sure our computer works and that's IT's department. So I will, I will give this up to the experts, but I will stick around and answer any questions and kind of more of what we're going to do hopefully with those cameras afterward. So all you, Mike?
All right. Thank you, undersheriff. Really quick, my way of introduction. My name is Mike Gibbons. I actually live just by Columbia High School. So I'm off the Shambow Loop. I'm in White Salmon, originally from Washington. So I'm sorry I couldn't join you in person today. I'm stuck at a conference in San Diego. But, you know, we've been working with the undersheriff on this project to try and get some cameras into the county because, as you know, the county is very large. And right now, a bit of a shortage of folks who can help us out. So I've been, it's been myself. And then when she was talking about the experts, she was helping us scope. That's Dustin Softick from Yakima PD. There are quite a few cameras around us. Yakima to North has cameras, Prosser, Washington, out into Kennewick and Pasco. We're putting some in Oregon pretty soon. And there's, I think we're almost up to 1,000 cameras in Washington State in general. And that's a network that the county would benefit from as well. So I'm here to answer questions. You know, I'm happy to be here. I'm going to let Kristin present and introduce herself, but I'm also, you know, I'm in the county. So I'm happy to answer questions anytime that anybody needs, you know, some more information.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council. Thank you Senator undersheriff Knox for introducing Flock. Thanks, Mike. My name is Kristin McLeod and I'm part of Flock Safety's external affairs team. And what we do is really outreach and education, providing an overview of what Flock Safety is and what the technology does and doesn't do for elected officials and community members. And I am not local. I am coming to you from Boise, Idaho. And again, happy to join you tonight. And between Mike and I and undersheriff, we hope to answer the questions you may have. I'm going to share my screen. I'll go through just a real quick presentation to share. Oh, it looks like I am. Perfect. Thank you.
Let me make you the host and then you'll be able to share your screen.
Thank you so much.
Okay, there you go.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, can you all see my screen okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, so Flock Safety, our goal is to eliminate crime and shape a safer future together. So why Flock Safety? Flock was founded back in 2017 by R.C. Garrett Langley. Garrett and his neighborhood were actually experiencing an uptick of crime, property crimes, vehicle burglaries, porch pirating, et cetera. And he went to local law enforcement and asked, you know, what can be done about this? What can we do to solve these crimes? What can we do to prevent them? And at that point, local law enforcement was pretty frustrated themselves and they said, you know, with the evidence that we had, I think there were some neighbors who provided law enforcement some footage from personal video cameras, doorbell cameras, et cetera. And they said, unfortunately, it's not really usable evidence. But you know, what would help would be a vehicle description and even a license plate number if folks, witnesses had that. And Garrett, you know, he drew on and asked, well, why? And it turns out over 70% of crimes are committed in conjunction with a vehicle. So Garrett set out to do a ton of research and he found out a few things. One, that license plate reading technology has been around since the 1970s. Two, that the companies that provided license plate reading technology to communities did sell it at a pretty costly amount. And then three, those companies often shared data and sold it to third parties. So he created Flock to really address those three areas that he wanted to change and impact and also do so and really build Flock around providing protections of communities' privacy. What Flock observes is that, and undersheriff mentioned it and Mike mentioned it, that local law enforcement resources are really precious things. Crime occurs daily, hourly, and trust is needed more than ever. We believe that Flock has the opportunity to utilize technology to multiply its force, to capture, distribute objective evidence, get that into the right hands of your officers and deputies, and to engage the community to support and grow. So how does the technology work? Something really important in this slide that I want to point out is this image right here. The camera, this is what it's capturing. It's the back of the vehicle. The machine learning is trained to capture the rear of the vehicle. And what you and I can see right now is exactly what that camera captures. That's a still image that shows the license plate, the color, make, any special features, window tinting, a bike rack, et cetera. So what this is, it is license plate recognition. It gathers that objective evidence and it alerts law enforcement of wanted vehicles and it's used to solve crime. What it is not, is not facial recognition and it's not tied to any personal identifiable information. And data is not stored beyond 30 days. So how does technology prevent and eliminate crime? It's proactive. So when a wanted vehicle or a vehicle associated with a missing person passes by one of the cameras, an alert is sent to deputies in real time. So within 20 seconds, that deputy, that officer is alerted that that vehicle has passed by one of the cameras. And it's investigated. Again, it provides that still image of the rear of the vehicle to officers and deputies. And then Flock camera serves as a deterrent. When Flock is in your neighborhood, you're joining a network of, undersheriff and Mike mentioned, agencies that already have Flock cameras in their neighborhoods. And it's really a network of safety that you're joining. Mitigating risk. How do we protect privacy? So it's very important to Flock. Footage is owned by the agency that is procuring the Flock cameras and will never be sold or shared by Flock. All data is secured securely in the Amazon cloud and is end-to-end encrypted. A search reason is required to, so if there is a wanted vehicle and deputies are pursuing an investigation, they would need to enter a search reason or a case number to find out more information. So that way, whoever is accessing the system, those law enforcement officers that are accessing the system, there is a trail that is fully auditable. And this is not used for traffic enforcement. This is our transparency and insights portal. This is something unique to Flock and optional for departments and it's customizable for agencies. But departments, law enforcement agencies that have our technology are able to utilize this to share with their community what their automatic license plate reading technology policy is, how they're sharing the information and what law enforcement agencies the information is being shared with. And then there's also an insights dashboard that departments utilize to really track the return on investment and are able to share that data and link that information, you know, is our agency utilizing this technology? Is it giving us the return on investment that we really wanted? So we're already solving and preventing crime. This is a list of Flock safety agencies in Washington. Mike, this actually may be, there may be a few more added to this. And then I wanted to share a few examples with you, some case studies. So this one, okay, Teflilla, right? Is it I'm pronouncing it wrong? Okay, Teflilla PD. So they received an alert that a stolen vehicle is in the area. Officers were able to locate that vehicle and as they approached, a suspect in a separate stolen vehicle attempted to flee. Vehicle was recovered a short time later and then officers continued with their original traffic stop and actually found the suspect in possession of illegal substances when recovering stolen vehicle. And then later that same day, another Flock alert led officers back to the same parking lot where they ended up recovering that third stolen vehicle. In Yakima, here are some statistics that they had seen in less than a year of having our cameras in place. And then this, I like to share, it made national headlines. It's out of San Bruno, California. And it just shows the impact that the Flock alert can have on helping law enforcement prevent further victimization. So five suspects entered a jewelry store and committed to commit a smash and grab burglary. The owner fended off the suspect. They fled. The owner of the jewelry store provided law enforcement a description of their vehicle. An alert was created in the Flock system. Law enforcement feared that the suspects would return to the same jewelry store and try to finish the job and at the same time escalate their level of violence used to do so. Well, unfortunately or fortunately, law enforcement received an alert that that suspect vehicle was returning or back into the area of the jewelry store. And they were able to intercept and make a felony stop and arrest the suspect and very likely preventing a violent incident from occurring. And then lastly, Flock has been used to solve hundreds of missing persons cases. This case is actually a stranger-on-stranger abduction out of Shambloo, Georgia. This mom took her baby for a walk and she was approached by armed masked individuals. After a struggle, they ended up taking the baby from her and fleeing. Mom, very distraught, did not have a license plate number to provide. In fact, I believe the license plate was removed from the vehicle at that time, but she did have a description of the vehicle. She provided that to law enforcement. It was entered into the Flock system and an alert was created. At 2:30 PM, an Amber Alert was issued at 12:30. Two hours later, an alert was received by law enforcement across State Line who thought that suspect vehicle was in the area. Law enforcement was able to locate that vehicle, conduct a felony stop, and safely return baby back to mom. While these are extremely rare cases, time is critical. And by having that alert entered into the system, law enforcement was able to very quickly, relatively very quickly, find that baby and return baby safely back to mom. So I have a lot of information. I will stop there and turn it back. If there are undersheriff or Mike for anything to add.
Mike, I'll let you take over.
All right, sounds good. Yeah, I think, and thank you, Kristin. I appreciate it. I think the big one for us is when we look at Clifton County and 1,900 square miles of geography that we have to cover, right? And that is, that is a massive area. We're bigger than the state of Rhode Island. The other piece of this, and I'll use an example from Skamania County recently, is they had a BOLO be on the lookout for a vehicle that was heading eastbound on 14. And we know that that's not a rare occurrence, that there are nefarious individuals that come into the county. And right now, it's very difficult and it's almost unrealistic to expect the sheriff's department, Goldendale PD, White Salmon, Benjamin PD to just be able to intuit that there was a nefarious person in our, you know, in our local community. Here, they'd know within 20 seconds. So that, that, you know, like camera we're talking about, putting on those ingress cameras for the county, we would have alerts within 20 seconds if someone came in and had an active warrant in the NCIC, which is a database that law enforcement uses, you know, throughout the nation to kind of coordinate. And I think, undersheriff, you guys had a be on the lookout for a vehicle that you uploaded to NCIC recently. So it's, you know, something that we use in the county that everyone else is using and they'd know. So it allows us to be a little bit more proactive in terms of responding to threats that come into the county, that come into our communities. The other thing is we can focus on officer safety. So we'll get more information about these people when they come into the county before they do something that might be, you know, an issue for us. I'm trying to be careful with my words here. But before they do, we know sometimes people do. And that's, that's something where that will help us as a county, but also at the same time, you know, throughout Washington, we built this network. When we're looking for people, not just coming into the county, but I'm trying to get the sheriff's office and, you know, I know chiefs in there from Goldendale PD. I'm happy to set you up as well, chief, with what we call an MOU. So if we are looking for someone, it's not restricted to our jurisdiction anymore. My, you know, one of my partners here at Flock, she was formerly with the police department in Tennessee, just threw somebody that they had a felony warrant out for and they ended up finding this gentleman in Florida. And arrest was made an hour later, you know, partway across the southeast. So there's a lot of application for this. But that being said, you know, kind of, that's what my passion is. And I manage Oregon, Washington, Idaho, and Montana for Flock. So our efforts in those states are what I'm currently overseeing. But that's, you know, it's my basic summary. I'm happy to open it up for questions and answer any questions you folks have.
I have one. Yeah, well, for the, for the city of Goldendale, would then, would there be a monitor then in the police station? How will that, how will that work where they receive?
That's, no, that's a great question. So we would set up Goldendale PD, Benjamin White Salmon PD, Clifton County Sheriff with, you know, it's essentially a browser-based portal where they can go in and any officers they've chosen who they want to be able to access the Flock program can go in, get alerts, do searches, however that would work. And that is a tool that we would give to Goldendale PD and then Benjamin White Salmon PD as well as Clifton County Sheriff.
Would someday, would it be available for all the officers and the patrol cars on their computers if needed?
I consider that a best practice. So I think that that's something that I really advocate for so that they know as soon as an alert comes out that the officers and their patrol cars know that. That being said, that's a decision that gets to be made by the department, the agency.
Okay.
So I advocate for it, but some agencies choose to do that and some agencies don't.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Is, I have just one question. It has to do with the cost. Is it a county system that the city would share? Or is it something that we'll be able to benefit from regardless? I don't know what the cost might be for the city side of it.
Right. So if the city wanted...
Carmen, if you step up to the podium. Nancy likes to stay along.
She'll yell.
She was feeling blurry.
I guess. Oh, yeah, I'm blurry.
So the cost is per camera and that includes setup. So if the city wanted to purchase their own set to be used within city limits, then that would be a contract with Flock and, and the city of Goldendale. But if we do get them in the county, we would still give you guys access to our camera system, if that makes sense. And the cost for the cameras, $3,000 per camera or $3,500 per camera every year?
Well, $3,000, undersheriff.
Okay. And so that includes, they set it up, they do the permitting, they do the maintenance. You just have to log into your account and look at the stuff. You don't have to do anything. There's nothing for you to go out and do. There's no maintenance that we would have to do or anything, which is a huge advantage. So.
Yes.
Yep. Go ahead. Was somebody else?
Steve.
Question. Why can't the system be used for traffic enforcement?
Because that's why Flock was set up. Mike?
It's what we, what we're really focusing on is the investigative side of it and then being proactive. So the camera's function on motion capture, right? So when something comes by, they're going to take several high fidelity images, but they're not tracking the speed of the vehicle or, you know, really designed to look for if someone has expired tabs or something like that. That being said, one of the things we'll focus on is how many vehicles are transiting through an area. So one of the things we found in Centralia, Washington, and then Chalis, is there was a lot more traffic than we had thought there was. There's a lot more stolen vehicle traffic as well. But to more directly answer your question, it's just not the way the system was designed. So it's something where we're not capturing speed. We're not capturing things like that. We're really focused on that high fidelity image that if a vehicle is involved in a crime, law enforcement can use that to go and then do some investigation around that and try and figure out and identify the individual.
So on the...
Go ahead, Senator.
Okay, in the, for example, in the city, we set some cameras up, but then maybe we want to change them, different locations. Then they would come in and change it for us? Is that, would that be an extra expense or?
So it depends. What we've, what we've kind of done for Clifton County is, is a little bit more of a pilot program. It's because I live here. I've managed to negotiate that. So we would be able to move cameras. Now, what we want to look at is what cameras are functioning well and which cameras are not functioning to the level we want them to. So if you put a camera in and you need to relocate it, that's possible. Flock will take care of that. Now, depending on, you know, if it's, if it's been a couple of years, it might be about $300 to relocate a camera, but we would send someone out and have them do that for you. And that's because when they're on our poles, it's, and it's $300 when it's a Flock pole. It's because we have to lay concrete. I have to get somebody to come out, lay concrete, put it in a pole up, those kind of things and move it. Now, we put it on existing infrastructure, the implementation is a lot cheaper and the relocation is a lot cheaper.
Okay. Thank you.
First, Chief?
I just have a question. You said the video footage is owned by the person, either the county or the city. And so how do you keep that secured under public disclosure? If I have plates, that somebody requests that information, they want to see every plate that's ever been photographed, I have to disclose that per state law. So how do I keep that secured?
That's a great question, chief. Thank you for bringing that up. And this has come up quite a bit. And my response is number one, always consult with your city attorney. And the way I like to explain it is we view it, and many of the agencies in Washington have concurred with this interpretation that it's very similar to body cam footage. So when the, the images of the vehicles are taken and are uploaded into the AWS cloud, Flock acts as a guardian of that information until your agency does, if there is a criminal investigation and you're searching for a vehicle, a description, an image, that license plate number, and then you access that and then pull that from the cloud into your evidence management, it is then part of that criminal investigation. So it will view, very similar to body cam footage. And again, I would encourage you, of course, to consult your city attorney. And we're more than happy to facilitate. If there's more questions on that with our council, we can connect councils and delve into that a bit further too, if needed.
And I'll add to that too, because I do a lot of support throughout the region. When there, if there is a massive FOIA request like that, let us know. We'll, we'll help you take care of it. We'll get customer success involved because we understand that's a, that's a giant data packet when you just look at that. And there's that distinction between data custodian, which is us, and data owner, which is the agency who, who's put the cameras in. The other piece of that is the 30-day retention period. A lot of times, you know, if someone submits the FOIA request, it's going to take more than 30 days. So the data's not there. And the goal is that we're not keeping this massive amount of historical data either. That we're keeping something where it's, the data's there, the image is there, it can be used for investigative... that we're keeping something where it's, the data's there, the image is there, it could be used for investigative purposes, that brought out of Flock to be used for that. Uh, but we've got that running 30 days of data. Chief, that answer your question?
It, it does, but, I mean, knowing the, I mean, redaction laws and things like that for public disclosure, even with our body cams, there is some things that are required more than a 30-day hold. If somebody required or requests that on day one, that they know they went through a Flock camera, they request that, and all of a sudden you guys are dumping that information after 30 days and not saving it after that request, that would be, I'm assuming a violation of Disclosure Act, but the other question, I guess, is the camera picks up the back of the car, there's a kid looking out the back window, do you have the technology to fade out people? Um, I know we have Axon body cams, and we actually have to go through a whole redaction process with eliminating certain juveniles, certain things, we have to redact out of that video before we can release that information. And so would that be something on the city to, to do those redactions, or do you guys have a program with the Flock camera system that works?
Yeah, I don't want to give away, I guess, it was being announced this weekend anyway, so we're blurring faces now and a lot of those images, you won't be able to see that. But we also, to your point, chief, you guys are using Axon body cams. Uh, we integrate with Axon, so Axon and Flock are actually built to function together. So we're looking at like the compliance aspect of that. First and foremost, we can directly load it to evidence.com. Um, happy to, happy to have kind of a longer conversation with the state of Washington, how some of the police chiefs in Washington, particularly Yakima and Rossar have dealt with that. Um, happy to get you in touch with them, chief, if you'd like.
Yeah, perfect.
Lauren, do you have something?
That's the exact question that I was going to ask Mike. And so I think, you know, because that is a concern in the community, um, it would be good to delve into that further and get more protection, security around that, and maybe even see some of that contract language, especially if you're looking for support from the city, but I know it's a discussion in the county that, um, you know, if that's not protected from FOIA requests, then it's a big concern. Because even though it may not happen within 30 days, you know, there's, there's some entities out there that are experts in making these FOIA requests, looking for information, um, you know, going after city, uh, county data on, on medical insurance and that sort of thing, just to promote marketing efforts. Um, and so I would like to hear more information and get a more concise answer on how the, the data can be protected for FOIA.
So, just quick, what is the retention law on body cam footage?
Different categories have different retention times. And so there is some, if we do like a test, it gets dumped within seven days, but it's non-permanent video. And so different crimes, different video, whatever, depends on what's being recorded, um, and the retention laws for that. And then there's also policy, different, in our policy, what, how long we'll keep some things versus others.
So is there any protection from them doing abroad? Yeah, I, I mean, I know FOIAs have to be very direct, but I mean, if they give us a time period saying, we're looking for records between this time period and this time period, is there?
Right, so I guess Mike can probably answer this better, but oftentimes we get public records requests for stuff that's already beyond its hold date.
Yeah.
And you just don't have that information for them. So if it's not there, it's not there. And I think that there's enough local, um, cities around that we can absolutely reach out to those organizations and find out and look at their, um, policies and, and contracts that they have in place. So Yakima's used, Yakima's got a ton of cameras and, um, they've helped solve some local crimes, so it's kind of nice to have that ability.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, I mean, it's a great program, you know, if you have the facility or the manpower to, I mean, cities like Yakima have their own redaction unit, that, that's all they do.
Right.
At the Goldendale Police Department, I have one.
We're in the state, and we've had, you know, 300 public records requests this year. So, I get it, but I don't think that I don't know. People do what they do. That's all I have to say.
I have one question. It's probably more for Mike than, than undersheriff. Not, I'm not too sure.
Yeah, a big part of that is, when we look at that and taking from policies like Yakima's, who I would consider a best-in, best-in-class policy around that, and then saying, how can we apply that to make the citizens of our community happy with, with this policy that we're rolling out? I think that's a really important part of this process. Will kind of help support you, and, and I think, you know, to Chief's point, Yakima has a lot of resources. And they're okay with us leaning on them to help other agencies that they get spun up, because Yakima's view is that the more cameras in Washington state, the better for them as well. Because there's more, there's more data for them to sit through to kind of get to whoever they're looking for. Another piece of this is the sheer amount of data that, that is being processed a lot of times, um, is mind-boggling for people. So we, we go through about 10 billion images a week as a company. So we're processing more data than we can estimate. Um, even Menford will look at the neighborhood, they're in the neighborhood of several hundred thousand images a week. And that's Menford, Oregon, they're not, you know, they're not a giant city, but that's kind of what happens there. So it's making sure that we have a policy where people understand what happens with that data, because a lot of it is inconsequential data. There's a lot of images that are captured that, that are not related to, you know, any active investigation or something like that, just a vehicle that's going through an area. Um, we're not tracking specific vehicles. There's an accountability piece of this, where if someone were to go into the system and search for an image of a vehicle, there's a reason, there has to be a reason attached to the search, so we can do an audit. So at any point, if I want to say, you know, I use myself as an example, if I wanted to see what Mike Givens searched for, I can go in there and do a very fast audit to be able to respond, and I can know if I was searching in accordance with our policy or not. Uh, because that's important as well. You know, a big piece of this is being accountable to the public for the platform that we're providing. We want to make this as easy as possible on agencies to respond if there's any inquiries around that.
Carmen, for a regular citizen, not a law enforcement officer, they would go to the police to ask about a plate or? It just happened to me Saturday, I had a car go by my home down the alley a good 10 times, cruising very, very slowly, both ways. I had no idea what to do. Finally, it went away, nothing happened in that neighborhood that I know of. But I don't think I could have accessed it and wouldn't want to. I don't think that's what an average citizen would want.
Yeah, no, this would be only law enforcement.
It should only be, that was my concern, right?
But every concerned citizen can go make a public information request, and as long as they do it before 30 days, the information should, is there.
Right.
Got it.
Right. And in your case, next time, call 911 or the non-emergency line and have them come check the area. We know the burglaries are on the rise, and they're pretty frequent around here. And you never know, so call it in and that's-
I intended to, I didn't, because I was busy with concrete and didn't have a lot of time to wait. But the same, I've also been looking for a cat or a dog, because I've had to do that.
Right.
So I'm not sure, but I, this probably would help the officer to check it out real quick if there was a camera anywhere near there.
Right, because you would have a, you would have a description of the vehicle.
Yeah.
And the license plate.
That's hard.
Yeah, that's sometimes hard.
But that's the important part to remember, if we don't have a license plate, and we have an active shooter at the school, and we just have a, a description of the vehicle, say it's some foreign truck with a red canopy with stickers on the back, you enter that information and that puts that alert out. So Mercer, private entities can own these cameras too, so like the grocery store, different companies, Mercer Ranches has these cameras out on the east end of the county. 19 minutes after they went live, they had a stolen vehicle go through their camera system. Well, we know that there's a lot of activity out there of trafficking stolen property up and down that road out through there. So that's a great tool for us to have.
So if somebody like a private company like Mercer Ranch buys the cameras, do they have access to view them?
They do, because they own the, own the, mm-hmm. And they can also give us permission. Like, they've given me permission to look at their camera system.
So like the mayor said, if the mayor wanted to buy one, you'd sell a Flock camera to a private citizen?
That, that's an important question, chief, and there is, there is a difference between what they have access to as a private entity, because we have, um, you know, there's Shields in Billings, Montana, for instance, privately-owned company, they have eight cameras in one of their parking lots. Uh, we also have HOAs that will purchase cameras. Their interface is completely different than what you're going to see as law enforcement. They're not going to get a lot of the contacts that someone like Clickitack County Sheriff would get. Now, they would know if there was a hit, and the goal and what we're trying to do there is drive them to interact with law enforcement, so the professionals can handle this. We do not want to put too much information in the hands of someone who can, you know, get $3,000 and put their own camera. Uh, that becomes, as you can imagine, quite the nightmare quickly, so we, we have a lot of provisions in place to prevent that.
But E S D 105 actually has purchased cameras, they're on the list. So the, one of the school districts in the, in 105 is Vancouver, no, Yakima. Yakima, he's 112 Vancouver, so they, they've already purchased camera systems, which is pretty phenomenal and a great tool for what we know can be a very volatile situation that can explode quickly and, um, you know, we can't guarantee how many deputies we're going to have here in town if something were to happen at our school district here, or vice versa, White Salmon, or like, or even Bickleton. I mean, a deputy could be two hours away before they even get to Bickleton. So having these things in place is just more opportunity for us to reduce some criminal activity. Uh, we know that we have a high amount of drugs coming in and out of this county. Fentanyl is overcoming, uh, a lot of people, taking a lot of lives. I don't know how many overdoses we've had just in Goldendale, but it's on the rise, and it's only going to get worse. So we need lots of tools, and I'm excited, I think this will help, and running a pilot program will give us some solid data, and I think we'll be surprised at how much is coming in to the county that we don't know about. So.
Carmen, part of that pilot program, are you suggesting maybe putting some of those cameras in the city?
I, I would propose to, I think it's a really good idea to part of the pilot program, just to see what we have coming into our cities.
Absolutely. It seems very practical, but-
Right. Right. We need to collect as much positive data as we can in order to make this work, right? I mean, I have to sell it to my commissioners, I have to find money in my budget as well, unless the commissioners decide to fund it. But even if I can get one camera for now, I'd be happy with one camera for the county. The move, the one that moves, that way I can target different locations. Because we know where our crime rates are increased at, we know where the criminals are hiding and the druggies are at, and we have to get these people off the street, and they need to go to jail, because there's plenty of room. So.
Absolutely agree.
And I'll say to that, to undersheriff's point as well, you know, Clickitack County Sheriff Office has done a great job of kind of pioneering the pilot. They've also secured approval for Goldendale and Benjamn White Salmon, should you want to pilot cameras within your communities. So that's something that undersheriff has done with Flock, um, she already took care of that, so if that's something of interest, please let me know, I'm happy to help you with that as well.
And Mike's been phenomenal to work with. Uh, he's been in my office numerous times, goes to all sorts of meetings, we've done multiple presentations in Lisle, because that's one of our high-crime rate areas, and we're hoping to have fewer calls there in the next year, so. And he'll be at our meeting in Benjamn tomorrow night, we're doing Benjamn City Council tomorrow night, so.
I will be. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person today, I apologize. I would have loved to be, especially since Goldendale beautiful, but unfortunately I'm stuck in the city, I guess.
That's a hardship.
How much, Mike, how much time do you need to get back to us and bring, provide some example policies and dig into that FOIA request issue a bit more? Provide us more detailed information, and maybe an example policy that really locks that down as much as possible?
Actually, I'm, I'm headed over to MIB Yakima here after this meeting, so I can ask them, I can ask Yakima PD and then Centralia's here as well, um, about that, and then see if I can get some other agencies on board, so I'm hoping, I'd like to have a response for you, I'm going to set the expectation probably day after tomorrow, to get you something that's a, a good sample policy to utilize, uh, just because I'm, you know, I'm not sure if I'll be able to get something back from him tomorrow. But I think probably Wednesday or Thursday.
So you could email that to me, and then I could-
Yeah, absolutely.
Put it onto them.
And we may have some boilerplate sample policies as well. And I, I know Kristen probably does, and I feel bad, I keep, I asked Kristen to come, she's flying out to Clickitack County tomorrow, so she's going to get to see the county for the first time. I'm excited about that. But she might have some boilerplate policies. Now, what we can focus on is specifically Washingtonian policies, because I know that our state is, is interesting with some of the laws that we have.
Yep, certainly. We'll be able to pull that together and send you all sorts of resources and information, absolutely.
Very good. Thank you, guys. Thank you, and Kristen, you're welcome to-
Thank you all.
You'd be happy to say.
Thank you, thank you, tell them.
Thank you, tell them, I'm excited to visit you all too.
Thank you. Thanks, Carmen. Very, very helpful.
Thank you.
For rural, small, small population areas like Clickitack County, I think it's very practical, but I'm not a law enforcement officer. Can't even find a license plate sometime. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Counselors, do you have other, more that you want to discuss on this side of now, or at the next meeting when you have some of the advice you'd ask for?
I, I would just like to definitely talk about it at the next meeting.
Yes, I think it should be.
Well, something I've been talking about for a number of years, to have a camera to, if we can talk about it some more, that'd be great.
So you want that added to the October, the November 6 meeting?
I think that would be the best, yes, thank you. And thank you all, very, very much.
Thank you. I look forward to joining you in person next time.
Wonderful. Thank you. You're up any time. We'll go on now to Department reports, but we can't with Chief Mike's.
Not much to go on, calls are up to, we're about 2,600 calls to date. I have a new officer, Bragman, hopefully starting November 1st. He's a lateral out of Wasco County, so we've finished up all the paperwork now, so he will start, we still have one open position. So we're still looking for another lateral or entry level, whatever we can find first. So we've got one more spot, I'm going to get full staff, but other than that, things are going good.
Thank you, appreciate your participation in this discussion especially. Now, the, you know, Goldendale Fire Department is training tonight, they're, they're, uh, working on their SE, SEVA, that's their air systems for firefighting. Uh, they're having special training tonight, so that's why Chief Holm is not here or any of the other fire leaders. We'll go on now to our Public Works Department, and Pat Williams, our Director of Public Works and Assistant Manager.
So this is not really, uh, something that we could be working on. I got a phone call today. Another airport is tearing down, I think it was, say, a 230-foot-long, 10-unit airplane hangar. It's a pole barn structure, but it's in great shape. The only reason they're removing it is they need that site, because they got a grant to build a brand-new still one. So it is an opportunity to the city, we may have an opportunity to get control of that building when it, um, comes down and, um, use it for a hangar out at our airport, where we can lease those units out for airplane storage. Um, if that's something you would like staff to pursue, we can do that, so.
So do you need consensus for that?
Yeah, just a consensus, that's what they would-
I'd like to know what it, um, cleared up to bid, or get a contract to look at it, see what they would want.
Yeah, we're going to get more information on the buildings and pictures and everything, and, and then, um, if it's a pole barn, um, we can actually do that in-house, but we'll need the measurements. I don't know if they have the poles buried, but we would surface mount, uh, we would put pilings in and then surface mount the poles to that anchor. But that would be the goal, and it would be a project that the Public Works could do to save some money. Obviously, there's going to be some groundwork involved with that, uh, so we have to get that figured out, what that would be.
It'd be good to have a, a, a budget for Public Works to know what their goal is, so that we don't exceed that.
Okay, the, um, the, the other thing is, uh, we need to set a budget, we'd like to set a budget meeting for next Monday night. At 5:00 PM, if that works for everybody?
Oh, they have, we're on a candidate's night next Monday night.
Oh, is that, okay. How about Tuesday night then? Next Tuesday?
I don't give a fiddle.
Are you doing a workshop for everybody, or just the budget committee?
The budget committee.
Oh, I thought it was, I thought we were doing a-
Yeah.
My understanding was we were working towards a council-wide budget workshop.
Oh, is that what you want to do, the council-wide?
I thought that's- I thought that's what our discussion was months ago. I brought up the last meeting. Yes, and we were really trying to look at revamping our budget and doing that council-wide. But I, that was just my understanding. I'm not.
Well, I agree.
Okay.
So you guys wanna do a.
Like a council, city council workshop.
Yeah.
So what's the date that works for everybody? At least everybody that's present.
So like Monday, the 30th?
I'm okay on that. I'm not here on the 23rd.
And then Jim, would you be able to attend that as well?
On Monday, the 30th? I believe so.
So at like five? Or do you wanna do six like a regular council? So five o'clock? So five o'clock our time? She's in board.
Yeah, that, I didn't know if you're asking me or if you're asking the rest. Um, I'm, I would make whatever you need work for that night. I'm open.
Okay. So October 30th at five?
5:00 PM.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So budget workshop.
So they'll have the whole council to work through that. I think that's a good approach. Thank you.
So the public works staff has been chasing a water leak on Roosevelt. They're trying to figure out where the leak is coming from. Uh, they've also been trimming trees around stop signs and other light of sight issues on corners. Um, they've been repairing some of the benches around town as well and replacing water meter lids. They also went up into the, um, sent it goes up to the spring and dug in some water bars for the winter. So that helped with road erosion and other erosion up there. The Public Works Committee um, met last week and we discussed um, Broadway Street and the parking issue on that. And um, I, it was given a directive and I'm looking for some. Looking for a consultant, a traffic consultant to look at the street for us and determine what he feels is the best options. And that was kind of my take of what we were discussing. Is that correct?
We're still pushing, pushing, you know. I see the advantage to having a consultant come on board with, you know, with all issues. But also at the same time, we deal with a lot of issues and I think this is one of them where we can make the call. We can figure this out.
Okay. Yeah, I think we identified another number of opportunities and ways to increase parking. If there isn't parking along the road and some other concerns if there, if there is parking as well. And so just bringing that outside input was what I, the group agreed on that day anyway. So I, I mean, definitely depending on the consultant's feedback that we make the decision, right, Steve?
Well, the feedback and the cost.
Yeah, that too, right? We got, that's up to us to figure that out.
Free.
But um, yeah, having that, uh, outside expertise, look into it and give us some options.
I'll get an estimated cost and then bring that agreement back to city council for determination if that's what you guys wanted to hear or not.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay. Um, I'm working on the organs, uh, utility rate ordinance for, to prepare for a public hearing on our utility rate increase. I'm, I'm still working with uh.
Angelo?
Angelo on that. So also, um, I should hopefully finish up tomorrow a draft contract for our first tenant on incubator business facility. Going in there. Um, I actually have a few other applications and potentially another one coming in. And then um, meeting uh, with county commissioners, um, we need to, I need to have a public notice out there. So I can get that done by Friday. Um, and then set a meeting the following week or the week after, whatever you guys prefer. And whatever works for the county commissioners. But I'll, I'll try to get a date set and then send to you guys and see if that'll work for them. At least the majority of the city councils attend that meeting. And they, the county commissioners understand this, this will have to be an evening meeting. They usually hold their meetings during the daytime. But um, just to make sure all council members have the opportunity to attend, they did agree to have an evening meeting.
What's that meeting about, Pat?
This, this is about the, the, the drug.
Yeah.
Issues that the committees experience and the homeless issues.
Yeah.
And we do tend on at least reaching out and trying to get somebody from Log App to attend. Uh, I would like the chief to be at that meeting and I am personally going to invite the prosecuting attorney there, whether he attends or not. I, I, I think this is.
I believe he's on the chair of the Log App too, so.
Yeah, I, I think it's really critical that uh, law enforcement be there. Mike presented with a court case uh, last week, wasn't it? Yeah. Um, last week I read that. I think I'm sure it was.
Yeah.
He did. Um, and any other council member that would like to leave, I think you can come in. I'll give you, I got two copies. They're, they're perfect if you wanna read it. And some of the challenges we are having um, in other cities are having with dealing with some of these issues. You know, I don't wanna go into the great detail, but um, till we get to when we go to a meeting we can. But, or you guys can come in and talk to me individually, um, if you would like about some of those challenges. But it is discouraging, I will say the most, until we see how the appeal turns out on these, on this court case.
I think it's absolutely imperative that these other entities are present for this discussion, even maybe even DHS H. I don't know.
I, I plan on inviting both of them, yes. Whether, I, I mean, I can't force them to attend.
No, but a no-show would certainly stay alive because there will be discussion involving them. I hope they know that.
I'm sure there will be, yeah.
Certainly these entities are driving legislation faster forward and they should be present.
Sure would think so.
How much of a notice, a public notice do you have to give out prior to having the meeting?
Um, well, it would be, we need to, next week's gonna be, it'd have to be, excuse me. Towards the later part of next week because the paper doesn't come out till Wednesday.
Okay.
I mean, we can, you know, technically under laws, we have to do is post it on our door or somewhere in the house 24 hours ahead of time.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Or I think it's 24, 48 hours. I think it's 48 hours ahead of time. But um, I think it's imperative to get it into the paper so that the public are aware that this meeting's occurring. And anybody that wants to address their concerns at that time that are experienced on being uncomfortable in city parks. Because the circumstances are occurring down there, have that opportunity to come in and address the, the elected officials, not only in the city, but it's the county as well. And it actually, huh?
Definitely. I think that was a discussion we had at one of our last previous meetings is that really we need the public support to come in and show up and comment because it's such a challenging issue, challenging, legislatively challenging, financially. And so we need to hear from community members if that is a concern. Um, please come speak and share your thoughts with us. So.
In fact, it might even be uh, helpful if, if there was more, more of a notice, you know, this public notice thing. It's stuck out back there.
No, I, I've, I've met with Lou.
Right by, it'd be nice to have something on the front page.
I, I've met with Lou last week. Um, I had a meeting with him for over an hour about getting this notice out there and making sure that at least the public are aware of it, if they attend or not. I mean, there's other things that we can do. We, you know, we can put it out over the radio as well a couple of times. Um, if that's what you guys would like to see, what we can.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt. I mean, you guys, just using regular radio.
Maybe we shove it out two weeks. That way you can get uh, people you know and get the word out there that this joint meeting's gonna happen. And also I'll try to get a date set tomorrow and um, let everybody know what that date is.
Thanks. You're working on that.
Excellent.
And we're even in contact with Log App today because they are contacting me about the cost of the food bank. So there'll be, so we'll probably work that into the same discussion, possibly not. But, but the city provides a certain amount of money in support of the food bank that goes through Log App to support how cities provide that support to people in, in serious need. That, that's normal. But she will also come for this discussion as well. She's been very cooperative.
Yeah.
Pleasant air, Mar. Everybody.
Will you be happy having people commit to be in there or is it just gonna show up?
No.
Who are committed to be.
If they're in charge of an agency, uh, we will ask and it's, it's a good invitation. They'll, I think they'll come.
That'd be, yeah, it'd be helpful setting agendas.
Richard Evans, who's the Central Worship Outreach Director for um, Senator.
Cantwell.
Cantwell. Um, after the meeting we had with him today, um, he was, you know, if it's possible, he would like to show up at that meeting as well or at least be in attendance on the meeting by Zoom. So we'll try to make that happen as well. Um, he, he's definitely um, concerned with what we've shared with him today. And he, he's interested in trying to at least help us.
I'm looking at the calendar, maybe the first week in November. Is that far enough ahead? I mean, that's just a, just an idea I'd look for. I mean, like the first, second, or third.
Okay, I guess I would ask if we could go the week end of sixth, cause I would be.
Oh, yeah, weekend of the sixth, okay.
Let me bring up today on one part of this, because we met today with representatives of Senator Cantwell, Senator Murray, and Governor Inslee. And they talked about, because there were items that we talked about that are different from what we've been discussing in these roundtable discussions and projects. There've been, for a number of meetings, Mylan has helped us meet with these officials to have discussions on different projects to keep them informed. And likewise, they keep us informed of steps we might need to be taking or could possibly take, things like that. But with the things that we had in discussion today, they were, they built towards a very focused meeting with these leaders. And the dates they were talking about, because they were looking at calendars, uh, the clearest one was the 4th of December. That's, we're in a very high holiday type time.
Yeah.
Fourth of December is in between Thanksgiving and Christmas enough to, to give people time to plan and be there for that type of roundtable. You were there, uh, Mylan was there, Dave was here.
And so that'd be for the same group that met today pretty much with a few additions.
But a few more focused additions. Chief Smith for one, because of the fentanyl issues that were there and somebody from the sheriff's department as well. To talk about what they're dealing with and the, the levels of these cases, things like that. So we began to find things that are beyond just the projects we're doing with the things that we should be directing programs more towards to, to help our citizens in various ways.
That'll be a good discussion. And if we could have the, the meeting um, locally about the, you know, drugs vandalism issue ahead of that, maybe that week of November sixth, to bring information out of that to the December fourth meeting.
Exactly.
Well, I think that'd be really helpful too, if Senator Cantwell's, um, whatever his name is, to get, A can attend that meeting as well. Then he's gonna kinda serve as a leader, I would assume, in that other meeting and hopefully help us find, uh, work towards a solution.
We have some sort of, somewhat of a projected uh, number of topics we're gonna do at this meeting, probably in December. I would be invited for one to fund storage, uh, developing agi, uh, agency, but also fentanyl, the airport. The wildfire 911 issues and uh, another one I no longer can read my writing. But we've, we've got those. It's, it's gonna bring different people into the discussion in addition to whom we've been talking. Housing, that was the one. Housing would be one of the specific area of housing that he can help us with, understand more clearly. What they do and what we could, as a city, could use that type of information to help with the different challenges we have in Goldendale. Housing, on development, so many different things, including the airport that we wanna talk, talk about in a broad discussion like that. I think it'd be very fruitful. You saw it today and I think it's worthwhile.
Interesting. Uh, what about our other representatives? Newhouse, Ross Parker, Corey? How come they were so discreetly not even mentioned?
Do you have, it's not a factor because of, I think, illness.
Yeah, they're, uh, representative from Congress of Newhouse, uh, the person has COVID.
Okay.
So.
And that's.
Then at the, at the December fourth meeting, they would definitely be invited.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, right, yeah. No, we're not leaving. We've had them before, all three of them there. But then this time, well, uh, her name's Ashley and she has COVID. And so.
How about Corey and Ross Parker?
Yeah, well, yeah, we, we can invite them. They're, they're, they're busy too, but we can definitely give an invitation. Especially when we talk about uh, drugs and whatever, you know, yeah, right.
They're, they're more correctly represented of our district.
Yeah.
Well, and I think it was kind of a federal, really targeted toward the federal legislative representatives at this meeting. So it's not like we're leaving our local representatives out, as I understand correctly.
Yeah, right, yeah. We could definitely have them here, of course, give them an invitation.
We have an incredible team of partners through our state and federal legislation. They're very, very helpful.
Yeah, I think.
Regardless of the party.
Yeah.
That's not political. These are.
The conversation was more of a policy change issue. Not only on the federal level, but at, on the state level as well. There needs to be policy change on how these things are looked at. And without those policy changes, law enforcement hands are extremely tight. And that, that's why it's critical for law enforcement to be there so that the public, I understand it's not law enforcement trying to do something. It's, it's not our, our prosecuting attorney not trying to do something. It, it's the restrictions of laws that have come up in the last three years or about three years that are, are causing the issue.
Okay.
So I think Steve brings up a really good point. Maybe we could work to just having a date with our state legislators, Corey King, Ross Parker, before the next legislative session. It's hard to get everyone together the same day, same time. So getting federal folks to stay together is difficult. But maybe we could just work towards that.
That, that would be fine to work towards. We, and, and it depends on the state and federal legislators, whether they have a chief of staff or someone stationed in Washington State.
Sure.
That's, the, the people we met with were from the Vancouver Tri-Cities, representatives of Senator Murray, Senator Cantwell, and.
Good House.
Oh, yes. All three were there, all the federal level, except for Newhouse. But they don't come usually in public. Their staff speaks for them and speaks with them continuously. Uh, David, uh, John Anderson from the Governor's Department was there. He must have taken five or six pages of intense notes on everything we discussed that goes directly to the governor. So we have good help. We really have good, strong support from the state and, and federal officials that, that are working to help all these rural areas.
Pat, you're pretty busy. Maybe we should nominate Mylan to get these state legislators together.
He is the fellow that does it. Mylan's the one that does the town ops for us.
That's where it's gonna go with Mylan, idiot.
Mylan Walling is the essence of my party. He has contacts positively, I've seen it for 10, 12 years at least, on either side, all the time. No matter what the friction of a topic, Mylan has a voice. It's incredible. We're very fortunate to have him in Clicktack County, period.
Agreed.
Well, thank you, Mary. But I will, I, I'd work on that. We'll work on that for a minute together. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think the impetuous, impetuous behind that was a date for a target for our local meeting regarding the.
First part of November.
What'd you say that?
We're doing a. So we can never click.
I'm gone this sixth, Pat. I got lost that week, so the sixth through the ninth, I would be gone.
So we need to go before the sixth.
A week of the 13th?
We're having the week of the 13th.
I'm free the 13th.
Because I think somebody else has gone this week, so a week of the 13th.
A week of the 13th?
Yeah.
Okay, 13.
That gives us lots of time for public notice.
Maybe we could run it as a deeper, several weeks in a row on my way and we can start getting it out on, have a regular, little radio station as well.
Anything else on this? Thank you, Pat, very thorough discussion, appreciate it.
One question going back to your report, Pat, you mentioned you were putting together that ordinance, rates conversation that we have, and will you, we talked during that rates workshop, we talked about having a one or two supplier, some of the history and background and reasoning on why we need to address the rates issue.
Yeah.
Is that something that we can have together before that first public meeting?
Yeah, you guys wanted to, you wanted a history of the rates as far back as we could go.
Yeah, we want some history and just some, the rationale on why we're addressing this issue now, and I think we can talk about maybe working with Angela on some of that process.
Yeah, I actually have a full conversation, I will have a full conversation with Angela tomorrow on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat, very thorough discussion and a lot of good planning. We'll go down to council business and the first item is the second quarter budget review by Jen Forsberg, and I'll turn that over to Pat, who Pat and Sandy is the...
Jen is on Zoom and so she, she'll go through our second quarter budget review.
Okay.
And so I've made you the host, Jen, so you can share your screen.
Okay. I haven't done this in a while, so hopefully I will be successful. Let's see, screen one and share.
There you go, yep, we can see your screen.
Okay. So I'm just going to walk through, I know some of the slides, it should have been in the packet, some of the slides do have a lot of information on it, so they're a little bit small, so hopefully on the screen they'll be big enough for everyone to see. Oops, I hit the wrong one, I'm going to hit this one, I have two screens, maybe not. One second, technical difficulties here. All right, there we go. So I've broken out the city's information into the general fund, the utility fund, the street fund, and then the other funds, because typically those are the three main areas of the city's functionality, is the general fund, utility fund, and then the street fund. So, starting with the general fund from the revenue side, we compared the 2023 revenue collected to date as of the end of June, and it's at 59.19% of the budget compared to 52.84 collected in 2022. So it's not a huge increase from the prior year, but you are trending and it's not going down on the revenue side, so that's a positive for the city for sure. On, and then here's the visual of it, you can see property taxes have gone up a little bit, sales taxes roughly the same, you know, taxes are a little higher. So, again, not a huge increase, but it is an increase between the two years. And I'm just going to keep going along unless you have a question and you can probably shout out is probably the best for me with Zoom. The expense side for the general fund, you're at about 52.58% compared to 42.23 expended last year. The increase is 13.52 between the two years and it looked like it was mostly due to the ARPA expenses that are being captured in 2023, as you can see here at the bottom of this screen, I guess it helps to point on the right screen, the law enforcement admin costs and the operations costs being charged to the ARPA funding. So all, for the general fund, it's trending, they're both at about 50% of the budget, which is where you want to be at the second quarter. On the utility side, revenue is at 58.01% of the budget compared to 52.05, and I think in the packet there was a typo, the 11.44 was up here at the 52. So the revenue collected in 2022 was 52.05% of the budget. Again, 2023 revenue is a little bit higher and it looks like that's due to some revenue received from Clickatack County in 2023. And you can, you can see that here, the 163,000 was received in intergovernmental revenue during this year. On the expense side, we're at about 48.82% of the budget compared to 40% expended in 2022, so it's about a 5% increase from the prior year. And it looked like that was due to the wastewater treatment plant improvements is what it looked like. When I was looking at the expense, there's about 114,000 that was expended to date through second quarter in the utility fund, otherwise things were, there are some anomalies between the different line items here, but for the most part it was pretty stable other than the expenditure here. On to the street fund, revenue is doing well in the street fund, I believe that's due to a grant that was received, the TIB funds for, is it Byers?
Yes.
Is that Byers Street? Compared to 47% last year, and so you can see that is what's driving it, is that intergovernmental revenue, and you'll see it on the expense side, it's also up, which matches with the project, with the public trust fund loan project payment and then administrative services is the 16% increase on the street fund. Got that down here. Now we head into the even smaller screens, and for the next presentation, if you want this broken out differently or if you want different explanations, just let Sandy know and then we can make some, some changes to the way that information's laid out if you prefer a different format. In this part, I didn't really go into a lot of detail on things because those are kind of the, the other funds, not necessarily the main funds, but they are pretty much tracking along according to the budget, parks and rec revenue, which is mostly other financing sources, probably a transfer from the general fund, is at 50% of the revenue. The housing rehab is at about 37, which when you look at the dollars, it's $1,100, some of the percentages can kind of be deceiving sometimes. The economic development, I'm assuming this is related to the incubator building that you were talking about earlier with some potential renters, looks like there was a Department of Commerce grant that was received for this fund, so that's why the revenues are so much higher in '23 versus '22. And then these, the public safety funds and the capital funds are trending, it looks like taxes are coming in a little bit higher for the capital improvement fund, which is positive, getting more revenue is always a good thing, that way you can fund more projects. And then we're still on revenues, the drug enforcement fund, sometimes those funds lag depending on what cases have been processed, so it's not too concerning that it's a little bit lower than last year. The tourism fund is also a little bit lower than last year, but I would assume the tourism business is picking back up with COVID and all that kind of, hopefully on the back burner at this point, but I know that there have been some rising cases, so hopefully that doesn't affect tourism even more negatively, but it should be picking back up. And then the suspense fund is just like the state fund deposits that the city collects and then transfers back to the state on a monthly basis, so it's not necessarily a city fund, but you do budget for it, so we included it. On the expenditure side, it looks like the parks and rec fund is a little bit higher than it was last year, and I'm not entirely certain if they're, if Sandy, you know the reason behind that, or...
They had some additional expenses because we redid our gazebo and there was some other parks things that we were doing this year, so.
Perfect, okay. Sometimes I can't tell by just looking at the lines in the budget in the GL, so thank you. The housing rehab looks like we haven't done anything this year or last year. Economic development, again, that's small business innovation grant, matches with the grant revenue in the revenue side, so that makes sense as to why that's so much higher from the prior year. And then the public safety reserve fund is also trending at about 50, 43% compared to 49 last year. Again, the capital improvement's at about 50%, which is where you would expect some of these to be. And lastly, again, back to the tourism fund, looks like you're matching last year pretty well with the amount of expenditures and different things that you're doing to encourage tourism in the city, so hopefully those revenues will continue to increase so that you can continue to have some great events and draw some more tourists to the area. But all in all, I didn't see anything that looked alarming, it looked like the city was on track and doing quite well with the budget through second quarter. And I'll open it up for questions, comments, and if I don't have the answer, I'll turn to Sandy.
And then my...
Yes, yeah, I do have the pronouns here, it's like a dictator.
County have comments or questions?
And then you'll have third quarters, maybe next council on the, on the sixth, or do you think more like the 20th of next month?
I actually got it done and reviewed earlier this morning, so it is ready to go whenever you would like it presented.
Okay, so we could probably do third quarters then next council meeting, so we'll do that on November 6th.
If that's reviewed and ready to go, can it be sent out to us rather than waiting for the Friday before our meeting?
Send it out to you prior to your emails?
Yeah, to our emails and then get it out now, so we can review it.
Absolutely. I'll have Jen email it to me and then I'll email it out to all of you.
Awesome, thank you.
Because I believe I've emailed for everybody. And if you have additional questions or want to see something different, you let me know ahead of time and then Jen can do those changes prior.
Yeah, just getting to the point now that I need classes.
It's hard for you to get out, you need a class.
And time.
So, does anybody have any other questions? Jen's in Florida, so it's quite laborious.
Oh, yeah.
We're mainly from Washington though, so there you go. It's fun to hear about the different things that are going on with the city. We lived in Washougal, so we weren't far from Golden Dale.
So.
All right.
Well, I think that's it, Jen, thank you so much. Did you have something else?
No, anything else from the council?
Nope. All right, thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
And we have the item that the Senate was amended for next, is the item H2 Airport Committee Action Item, and this is primarily discussing the airport support improvements. I think there's a number of things happening with the airport right now that will generate other discussions as well. But you have one, one page, I'll give this to Pat, I think you met with Rick Lundin and I think you laid out this, this document, action items.
For this one?
The H2, that thing you emailed me?
What more can you sign over to us?
Yeah, so that came out of our discussion earlier today with our federal representatives, and so these were just a list of items that they suggested, recommended that we get on as soon as possible and preparing for securing funding for the airport, and so I just took my notes, put it into a bullet list and wanted council to take a look at that and see if it would be action items that council was supporting, that airport advisory committee to look into and then report back to the council on.
Excellent.
So we just need consensus then to send it over to the airport advisory committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Well done.
You guys have that.
You have a committee here, aviation experts, they have planes, training and everything.
And there are a lot of acronyms that went right over my head.
Oh, they do, yes.
It flew over my head.
They might be nice.
Were there other things you wanted to bring up in addition to this or...
No, that was just it, I just wanted to bring forward what we've been doing at the meeting this morning and get that to the council and the advisory committee.
If there aren't further items on that discussion, we'll go on to a report of officers that will begin with Steve Johnston on the council.
Thank you, Governor. I'll give an update on our traffic safety committee meeting where the main, main topic was speeding cars, and we threw everything we could on the table, and unfortunately there are limited options. Putting a police officer out every corner with radar, that's not going to work. There is technology being developed that kind of falls in line with this presentation we had from the sheriff's office that does focus on speeding cars, but it's still, like I say, they're still developing it and it's rather expensive. And actually, the one, the one option that is the most effective or least costly and that most people like the least is speed bumps. And, you know, we discussed all of these and I think there's room for further discussion on it, we didn't, we didn't really come to a consensus, and it would be nice because that's also increasing, those kind of violations. It's an error, it's an attitude of lawlessness because there's very little accountability anymore.
Disregard.
Just total disregard. And some of these main areas, High Street, Washington Street, you've got Central Drive here, pedestrians, school districts, I mean, the school has already made note of the people that run through the stockpile, one bus is stopped, and it's increasing, but anyway, because we didn't come to any kind of even consensus, I would request we have another meeting to come up with something to present to the council.
Can we have that meeting, Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the traffic safety committee is the mayor, Mike, you and Steve. Is the traffic safety committee. So when did you want to meet?
I'm fairly flexible, I pack work.
Mike, when are you free?
I am gone the 6th through the 9th.
What about next week?
Next week? 6th, next week, 23rd.
23rd is Monday and you have a couple meetings, or you have one meeting for sure, so...
I have one meeting at 3:00, but then other than that it should be...
So like the 24th, you want to do it Tuesday?
Uh-uh.
Tuesday for you?
Yeah, 24th.
What time do you want to meet? 3?
8:00 AM.
5:00 AM, or 5:00 AM worked for me, but...
That's a, that's a no.
What works for you guys?
I'm free.
I'm free.
Three?
Three?
Three o'clock?
Okay.
Okay, better.
Three PM.
It's fine.
You want anyone to eight o'clock?
Steve wants eight o'clock.
Steve said he's my bright side.
He's volunteering his time here.
So three PM on the twenty-fourth?
Three, twenty-fourth, yes. Thank you, thank you. Also, we had, I think it was the public works, last public works committee meeting we had, we discussed street improvements and specifically I presented the petition from the folks on Pine Street. And I believe I asked Pat if, you know, we discussed different options that are available to address that. If we could, I don't know, we have to have a meeting for that or I can come into your office and discuss it. But I think a committee meeting would probably be more useful to pin something down on that also.
Can I throw an idea or a question about maybe, I don't know, if we have a subject matter expert or someone to give a presentation to help council and the public about the LID suggestion you had? Just to get us all on the same page and up to speed maybe as the next step? Just an idea for Pat and Steve.
Well, that's one of the options, absolutely. And of the options that we discussed, everything from a Band-Aid basically, which is just all good money after bad. We decided there was going to have to be, you'd have to remove, the material is there regardless, we're going to put asphalt over what's there.
Yeah, we would actually probably leave the material there, but we would grind it up back into gravel. As much as reasonably possible, grate it out and then put some top cores back on top of that because there's not such of a road base there.
Right.
And it needs to be, because no matter what we put on without a road base, it's going to fail.
Oh, absolutely.
So that would be the best solution. Going in there and over, like that's not a solution, that's just going to fall back apart in many years. But again, we could go back in there and we talked about chip sealing it again, which that would, you would do, we're going to do two layers this year and then a layer the year after. But chip sealing is a lot more affordable option than the asphalt. And it'd probably make the numbers work better for an LID than asphalt, but that's, you know, if they want to pay for the asphalt, you know, we, I'll, I'll see if I can find, there's a, I don't have this name anymore, but there's a, I'll see if I can track down the L, L I D, whatever you're working in the state that actually, you know, I haven't put an LID together in probably twenty, twenty-five years, I mean, they've been...
But it is different option. And again, I can comment about, there's these different approaches from the bottom up. We want to get the best bang for our buck, obviously. And it'd be nice to do it right and get it done. And that's where I think the LID, the LID funding would help in that, in that direction. Because it'd be nice to put a sidewalk on one side, you know, really make a nice street out of it. And if we did, what's there has lasted for half a century. And so if we did it right.
Yeah, I'm not against a sidewalk, I'm just thinking, there's no storm water on High Street, is there?
No, any light.
Storm?
Storm.
Storm drain?
Storm drains.
Yeah, there's a nice ditch on each side.
He says High Street, you're thinking Pine.
Or Pine Street, same thing. Pine Street, yeah, there's a drainage ditch up both sides.
Well, there's a drainage dish, but if you put a curb there, the water can't get to that drainage dish. I mean, there's a way it can, I guess, we can open it up, but, but that's a little bit more challenging when you have a sidewalk like this.
Okay, well...
I mean, it can be done, it's just...
A cost analysis is what I'm looking for here on these various options. You know, there's four or five options here, you can do a cost analysis on it, present it to the property owners. And, you know, if, if they balk at the LID and then, then this is what the other remaining options are.
I did get your cost analysis.
Okay, do we need to have a meeting to go over this again?
I don't, I mean, you could put your cost analysis together and have a...
Well...
Yeah, we could do that, we could have a conversation about LIDs and learn more about that and then meet.
Well, I think it'd be a good idea because the experience that I've had in council and the city has had with LIDs in the past, it worked really well. It was an LID that redid, did the reconstruction on...
On buyers.
On Columbus Street. Entire street.
What year was that LID, you know?
Thirty years ago, ninety-two, ninety-three.
Yeah. Not saying you can't do it, just LIDs, they're still there, there's, it's still a viable option, they're just not been used that much. And I don't want to get into that detail tonight, why, and I think that would be better off to come from the LID expert of why people have gone away from those. And it's not the city who got away from it, 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 there's some financial challenges there, but if all the people vote for it, then it should be fine.
Right, right.
Then there's two ways to do an LID. There's a forced LID, which means the government's saying, we're forcing it on you. And there's certain standards when we force something on the public that, that we have to show there's beneficial financial, you know, that their property value goes up a certain percentage. I don't think there's enough houses there to do a forced LID. So it would happen to you voting in LID. And I, you know, I don't want to give an answer that I don't know, but that's why I think we need to talk to somebody about how to set that up.
Well, yeah, more information the better. And I don't think we need to reserve to a forced LID.
Oh, I'm just giving an example, yeah, there's challenges with them, so.
This is not that kind of a situation by no means. It would have to be a voluntary on, on the part of the property owners. It's pretty simple, pretty straightforward, either they say yes or they say no, and so... But that's where you're going to get most of your funds to, to do a really good project. So that, that's why I want to look into it and say, do a cost analysis and present it to the property owners and they will help set the direction.
Okay, well, I'll get our engineer, we got some options, appreciate it.
And if you want me to stop by and...
Yeah, if you're more willing to stop by, yeah.
One other thing, we've done it a couple of times in the last couple of years, but could we instill this again, a report, at least a monthly report from our building inspector, code enforcement person?
Yeah, we can have him attend the meetings. I've talked to Mike about it several, you know, that he needs, he's more willing to attend the meetings, Mike is.
Yeah, you know, to disclose, let's say, the number of building permissions issued that month.
We, they have a spreadsheet that they've given in the past and he still fills those same things out.
Good.
So there's a spreadsheet that will show them how many code enforcement cases we have, and then another one that says all the building permit values.
Okay, it'd be nice to make that, you know...
Monthly or quarterly or what do you think?
Once a month. Should be, you know...
Quarterly might be a little strain on his activities, but...
Or quarterly, but regularly.
Yeah, regularly more, I think.
That's, that's, yeah, thank you, Your Honor.
You bet, thank you, Steve.
You too.
Oh, thanks, sir, appreciate it. Hey, I just want to let everybody know that I was able to attend the observatory fiftieth anniversary they had on Saturday, it was really great. And that morning there was an eclipse and I was there too for that and all the place was just packed, you couldn't even find a place to park. The observatory is drawing so many people now that if you want to go there, you can't just show up for their programs, you know, you got to make sure you go on the internet, on their website and get a reservation. It's free to do it, but you know, we need to make sure people know, don't make the mistake to just send people, oh, back in the day, you could just go up there anytime because, you know, there wasn't that many people attending those programs. Like at the grocery store, I used to just send people up there, oh, just drive up there, you know, but you can't, you can't do that anymore, don't, you don't want to just send people up there without them having a reservation because they'll be turned away. But that's great news for us because that place is drawing such big crowds that they're reaching their attendance capacity every program that they have. And, you know, that's great for our local economy. So, yeah, it's just a really great partnership we have with them. When I was up there on Saturday, there was, I read three different languages being spoken, not including English or Spanish, you know, and it's just great to see that we have such a diverse group of people coming to visit our community and...
Single Japanese from there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's just something to be proud of and I'll keep endorsing the observatory for a great place to go for people.
Absolutely.
Wonder if there's some opportunities for Chamber of Commerce to work with state parks and try and, one, maybe survey some of the attendees and see what their interests or needs are when they're visiting Goldendale. But like one of my first is late night dining. So we know if there's an event, can we coordinate with some of our local restaurateurs to have some late night dining on that particular evening?
It's a good idea.
Great idea.
Anything else, Lauren?
Oh, I have a few things for myself, are you done with everyone?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Well, I want to thank everyone for the conversation and I had a number of different topics. I had a great council meeting. Two, I know we've had some challenges with our website, so we think about our budget, I wonder if we could designate some funds to get that website updated and maybe provide, I know this website, maintenance services that make it super easy for Pat and others to just provide content and then that gets updated to the website.
I have the draft RFP.
Awesome, that's great, okay.
We've been happy to do that for a little bit because Betsy that does do that, she's retired, I guess, last year she just informed us this year. And so there's really nobody that will be maintaining it after she's completely done. So...
Yeah.
It's, it's been quite a while since we've updated that.
Yeah, the, no one knows why it went down.
It just all of a sudden came back up, so Radcom was looking into it, it was down a couple days and then all of a sudden it came back up, so...
We, we tracked down, yeah, the servers cleared to Texas and the servers in, the servers in Texas were working fine.
That's what, I really enjoyed in my office, putting that content management in experts' hands. So anyway, just to throw that out there.
Well, I wasn't able to track it down, but that's beyond me.
What, what is our timeline for our next union negotiation?
Actually, I should be probably the week after, probably next week we'll have a meeting.
Oh, really? It's going up that quickly?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess maybe for our next council meeting, I don't know if we can talk about staff performance and maybe have our, our legal representative here, because I know in the past, some of our union negotiations have been challenging with how communication happens with staff, council members, others, and so we just, it'd be nice to have a nice primer on that for everybody that's on council now, ahead of any issues arising through that process.
Sure.
And so I don't know if Tony Mink can talk to council in executive session about those performance in the union negotiation process? And lastly, public works meeting, do we, can we schedule a public works meeting? No, that was the traffic safety committee, not the one of Steve's committees.
I tried to, I tried to hear mine.
Public works tomorrow? Wednesday?
Tomorrow will work, if it'll work.
The seventeenth?
Yeah, I'm okay for me.
Myland, good, Lauren, Steve?
Yeah, as long as it's a short one.
Late afternoon, I think relatively short, yes.
Okay.
So four o'clock, three o'clock?
Four, is four okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so seventeenth at four?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
I have nothing.
Myland?
Well, thank you, Mayor, I just, again, a comment on the really good meeting we had this morning and just look forward to working with all the county agencies and, and working on the projects we're all working on, so, yeah, that's what I have.
Been a busy week.
Yes.
First day.
Was it?
On the, on the mayor's side, I just wanted to emphasize the quality of the presentations at the Goldendale Observatory. We saw them Saturday, Dave and I, I don't know who else was there, they had a fiftieth anniversary celebration. Not only did you get to look at the sun without your glasses on, which is really nice, because there are filters in there, filters are filtered by hydrogen, that's element that lets you see the sun incredibly detailed. There's some really scary things that happen on the sun normally. So I hope people will take your children up there, take your relatives up there because it is well worth, it's free. My heavens, we don't have anything worth that many millions of dollars for free, other than you have the parks pass. And Mike Latimer from the park commissioner, one of the park commissioners was there, we had a long discussion about different things on this park as well as others. It's phenomenal, the staff that, at our Goldendale Observatory Park are phenomenal. They're well trained, they're real educated, and they're very, very dedicated to helping people understand all the things about the observatory and what they see and how it all goes into place. There's tremendous facilities there, the city worked hard with the parks department and others to get that massive meeting room where you can see large screen TVs of what this, not only that, that telescope is seeing, but things around the world, other places. It's astounding what you can do if you spend time at the observatory as free. You need the parks pass, but if you think of how many parks there, state parks are in portions of state, that's cheaper than a Big Mac by far. It's almost nothing when you divide that out to how many parks you have paths to go and enjoy, learn, visit, see, chased by bears, everything. We hope, I hope people will really use that observatory, it's absolutely priceless. And Pat, did you have anything further, as a city administrator?
No.
Okay, well, thank you. I think it all gets covered under that first area, I don't know how to change the title for it, but appreciate all you've given us today, absolutely. The next item on the agenda is public comment, is there anyone here for public comment? These are here in the council chambers or on the screen, I think everybody's going home for us.
And Oak Rogers still there?
Hi, Roger, thank you for all you do for us.
Anybody for public comment?
With that, we need a motion to adjourn. So... The move to executive adjourn the city council for October twenty-third, October twenty-two, twenty-three, all the way.
Hi.
Thank you. I'm so passionate.